Turn down, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. And second by Mr. Bork.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
The amount here, you said estimated available is 40,000.
Uh huh.
So what we're taking out right now would be dropping us below the 40,000.
Yeah, you would drop to about 3,500.
35,000.
Oh, sorry, 35,000, good God. 35,000.
Right.
I just think that even 40,000 is very, very tight in this.
He's being, that's why I think he's being very, very conservative.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, you know, I think, you know, we had already, we had already decided on the Code Red piece. You know, if the, if you're beyond the level where, I mean, you're already beyond my level of comfort, but if you, you know, I mean, obviously the SOU rifle can stay in the budget. The fuel cards was one of those, it dawned on me looking at that budget that I just hadn't gotten out to get those and that, that could not actually budget too. I mean, that's only 250 bucks, not a big deal.
So you say the only one we really have to do is Code Red because we've already taken that.
You've already done that. If you choose, yeah, I mean, if you're not comfortable doing the others, I'm completely fine with that. None of these are time, I mean, they're not time sensitive by any means.
For the discussion on the motion for Code Red, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Stained? Motion carries two, one, zero. On, let's see, on 42, 4190 dot 10 dash 342, no, sorry, 42, 42, 4210 dot 740, the police SOU rifle, do we want, for an encumbrance of $1,982. The discussion is, do we want to do that? I'm inclined not to even bring a motion forward for it too.
First off, I think you can do it cheaper because there's a couple of points here. If you talk to the police, they're saying that the barrel apparently shot out on the existing rifle, is that what the issue is?
Well, I don't recall, but I mean, I would say the discussion, we had the discussion through the whole budgeting process that we agreed that the SOU rifle needed to be replaced.
For what reason though, that's I guess might be my question.
I would have to go back in our notes, we started this back in August and we supported it all the way through, so.
I think it was, was age, use, repair.
Yeah.
Number, number of rounds that have been through it over its 15 year lifespan.
I mean, the SOU officer is actually in station if you'd like to bring him in here and have the discussion again, but.
No, I think we, I wouldn't go in favor of it even if he provides.
I'm agreeing, I think we're, I think we're at that point, I think the comfort zone around and taking any more encumbrance dollars out of this year's appropriations doesn't make a lot of sense.
And my only point was going to be if they needed to, if the barrel shot out is what the issue is because of practice or whatever the case may be, they can buy an upper receiver and replace it on their rifle relatively simple and straightforward and whether they got to buy a hold carrier or not, they can do that. You can do it much cheaper. Secondarily, a Bushmaster rifle, a Car four, is not going to be this price, so there's got to be included which is what.
It's all sights and stuff, we did that.
You can transfer sights off the existing weapon, you don't have to buy new sights unless they're broken, which I don't have information on one way or the other, but why, I don't know why they can't use the existing sights on the, on the existing weapon, just transfer them over.
So, Mr. Byron, I agree with the discussion, the point being is that discussion was through the budget process and I believe you supported that rifle being in the budget, it's still in the budget today, all we're asking is whether we want to encumber $13 to cover it for 14. Sounds like we don't want to do that, it sounds like it makes no good financial sense to do it because we are so close to the bottom line right now. So, there is no motion on the table, I haven't heard one being made, so that will not get.
Okay.
With regards to welfare, you kind of said you didn't, one way or the other, but you really see $250 hurting us at all?
No.
So, I think having the fuel cards in stock makes sense, so I'll make a motion that we, for account 4445 dot 20 dash 825 welfare, the amount of $250 to be used for fuel cards to be encumbered for the 2013 budget. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion feels well, lack a second. So, at this point, the only thing we've encumbered for this year will be $2,336. At this point, there is no other request for encumbrances. And just to clarify for the public, because I believe we had an audio problem when we started the meeting, this board has taken action on reencumbering, reencumbering dollars that were incumbent in 2012 or 2013, those projects are still in a state of flight as far as not completed or going to be completed over the next year or so. So, we reencumbered out of already appropriated dollars in the past few years, $23,398. Then we took an action to encumber this year expenses for expenses that we know are coming in that just haven't hit the books yet and they may not make the books by the time of close of the year. That total, that total amount was $65,644. Those aren't, those are not net new expenses, those are this year expenses that are incurred this year, we just don't have invoices or active bills for them yet. And then, as you probably just heard, the latter, that left us with roughly, $40,000 is our estimate of being able to finish the 2013 budget based on our appropriations at town meeting. Healthy discussion around what we'll do, there's a lot of uncomfort level around the budget finishing, because we're unable to expend beyond our appropriations. So, this board only took one action and that was to fund half of the Code Red service that we've been funding that way year over year for the amount of $2,336, that was the only encumbrance we took for this year. The rest remains. So, I think that includes encumbrances, right? All right. At this point, I will open the floor for public input. For those public people who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, I'll remind you that this is a respectful recourse, discussion, about five minutes to.
Jason Grad, 11, Perry Court, and of course I'd be respectful. Just a point of clarification, I was, as I was listening to how you were calling everything an encumbrance, it's quite confusing because one's a carryover and that would be those projects that continue from fiscal year to fiscal year. And the other is a, an accrual, which would mean those expenses incurred and invoiced this year that are rolling over into the next. And so, as I was sitting there, I got, I lost track and I was hoping that you could redo those real quick with the dollar amounts into what is actually a carryover, which would be those things that are multi-year, you know, funded dollars, right?
Those are, those are reencumbrances from years past, so we've encumbered dollars for whatever the project was as we stated and they're just being reencumbered this year.
I understand, and I was, in my mind, I was waiting for encumbrances and they came up all as encumbrances and at the end there, you said there's only actually one which is Code Red, that's why I'm starting over in my head. And that's what, the only reason I'm up here to ask is can you just please restate those so that I can get my head wrapped around which, what the difference was? Because when you said encumbrances, I started adding up encumbrances.
So, I hate to rehash the whole meeting because.
No, no, just the numbers, bottom numbers.
Getting late, but.
Turn down, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you. And second by Mr. Bork.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
The amount here, you said estimated available is forty thousand.
Uh huh.
So what we're taking out right now would be dropping us below the forty.
Well, yeah, you would drop to about thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five.
Oh, sorry, thirty-five thousand, good god. Thirty-five thousand.
Right.
I just think that even forty thousand's very, very tight in this.
He's being, that's why I think he's being very, very, very conservative.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, you know, I, I think, you know, we had already, we had already decided on the code red piece, you know, if the, if you're beyond the level where, I mean, you're already beyond my level of comfort, but if you, you know, I mean, obviously the SOU rifle can stay in the budget, the fuel cards was one of those, it dawned on me looking at that budget that I just hadn't gotten out to get those, and that, that could come out next year's budget too, I mean, that's only two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, not a big deal.
So you say the only one we really have to do is code red because we've already taken that?
You've already done that, if you choose, yeah, I mean, if you're not comfortable doing the others, I'm completely fine with that, none of these are time, I mean, they're not time-sensitive by any means.
For the discussion on the motion for code red, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Stained? Motion carries two, one, zero. On, let's see, on forty-two, forty-one ninety dot ten, dash three forty-two, no, sorry, forty-two, forty-two, forty-two ten dot seven forty, the police SOU rifle, do we want, for an incumbent of one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. The discussion is, do we want to do that? I'm inclined not to even bring a motion forward for it, too.
First off, I think you can do it cheaper because there's a couple of points here. If you talk to the police, they're saying that the barrel apparently shot out on the existing rifle, is that what the issue is?
Well, I don't recall, but I mean, I would say the discussion, we had the discussion through the whole budgeting process that we agreed that the SOU rifle needed to be replaced.
For what reason, though, that's, I guess, might be my question.
I would have to go back in our notes, we started this back in August, and we supported it all the way through, so.
I think it was, was age, use, repair.
Yeah.
Number, number of rounds that have been through it over its fifteen-year lifespan.
I mean, the SOU, the SOU officer is actually in station, if you'd like to bring him in here and have the discussion again, but.
No, I think we, I, I wouldn't go in favor of it, even if he could provide.
I, I'm in great, I think we're, I think we're at that point, I think the comfort zone around and taking any more encumbrance dollars out of this year's appropriations doesn't make a lot of sense.
And, and my only point was going to be, if they needed to, if the barrel shot out is what the issue is because of practice or whatever the case may be, they can buy an upper receiver and replace it on their rifle relatively simple and straightforward, and whether they got to buy a hold carrier or not, they can do that, you can do it much cheaper. Secondarily, a Bushmaster rifle, a Car four, is not going to be this price, so there's got to be included, which is what I.
It's all sights and stuff, we did that.
You can transfer sights off the existing weapon, you don't have to buy new sights, unless they're broken, which I don't have information on one way or the other, but why, I don't know why they can't use the existing sights on the, on the existing weapon, just transfer them over.
So, Mr. Byron, I, I agree with the discussion, the point being is that discussion was through the budget process, and I believe you supported that rifle being in the budget, it's still in the budget today, all we're asking is whether we want to encumber thirteen dollars to cover it for fourteen. Sounds like we don't want to do that, it sounds like it makes no good financial sense to do it because we are so close to the bottom line right now. So, there is no motion on the table, I haven't heard one being made, so that will not get done.
Okay.
With regards to welfare, you kind of said you didn't, one way or the other, but you really see two-hundred-and-three dollars hurting us at all?
No.
So, I think having the fuel cards in stock makes sense, so I'll make a motion that we, for, for account four-four-four-five dot twenty, dash eight-twenty-five welfare, the amount of two-hundred-and-three dollars to be used for fuel cards, to be encumbered for the two thousand and thirteen budget. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails without a second, so at this point, the only thing we've encumbered for this year will be two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. At this point, there is no other request for encumbrances. And just to clarify for the public, because I believe we had an audio problem when we started the meeting, this board has taken action on re-covering, re-incumbering dollars that were incumbent in two thousand and twelve or two thousand and thirteen, those projects are still in a state of flight as far as not completed or going to be completed over the next year or so. So we, we, we encumbered out of already appropriated dollars in the past few years, twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-eight dollars. Then we took an action to encumber this year expenses for expenses that we know are coming in that just haven't hit the books yet, and they may not make the books by the time of close of the year. That total, that total amount was sixty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Those aren't, those are not net new expenses, those are this year expenses that are incurred this year, we just don't have invoices or active bills for them yet. And then, as you probably just heard, the latter, that left us with roughly forty thousand dollars is our estimate of being able to finish the two thousand and thirteen budget based on our appropriations at town meeting. Healthy discussion around what we'll do, there's a lot of uncomfort level around the budget, finishing, because we, we're unable to expend beyond our appropriations, so this board only took one action, and that was to fund half of the code red service that we've been funding that way, year over year, for the amount of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, that was the only encumbrance we took for this year. The rest remains. So, I think that includes encumbrances, right? All right. At this point, I will open the floor for public input. For those public people who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, I'll remind you that this is a respectful recourse, discussion, about five minutes to.
Jason Grad, eleven, Perry Court, and of course I'd be respectful. Just a point of clarification, I was, as I was listening to how you were calling everything an encumbrance, it's quite confusing because one's a carryover, and that would be those projects that continue from fiscal year to fiscal year, and the other is a, an accrual, which would mean those expenses incurred and invoiced this year that are rolling over into the next, and so, as I was sitting there, I got, I lost track, and I was hoping that you could redo those real quick with the dollar amounts into what is actually a carryover, which would be those things that are multi-year, you know, funded dollars, right?
Those are, those are re-incumbrances from years past, so we've encumbered dollars for whatever the project was, as we stated, and they're just being re-incumbered this year.
I, I understand, and I was, in my mind, I was waiting for encumbrances, and they came up all as encumbrances, and at the end there, you said there's only actually one, which is code red, that's why I'm starting over in my head, and that's what, the only reason I'm up here to ask is, can you just please restate those so that I can get my head wrapped around which, what the difference was, because when you said encumbrances, I started adding up encumbrances.
So, I hate to rehash the whole meeting because.
No, no, just the numbers, bottom numbers.
Getting late, but.
Yeah.
The re-incumbrances or actions that were taken by boards in the past, maybe last year.
Carryovers, okay.
Were carrying over funding for these projects that are either in a state of not-done, complete, or whatever, and I will list them out, the total, they totaled twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-eight dollars.
Twenty-three thousand, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
One, is impact fee update, which is for the total amount of thirteen-thousand-five-hundred, emergency management exercise for twenty-five-hundred dollars, software training and data updates for the fire department for one-thousand-eighty dollars, tax map update for seventeen-fifty, town hall roof repair for three thousand, that is a carryover, holdback, so we may have a bill, may not have a bill.
Yep.
And then assessing services for the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, those are the re-incumbrances, and that's the terminology we use.
Okay.
For expenses incurred in two thousand and thirteen that we do not expect to hit the books before the close is as follows, the fourth quarter bill for the ambulance at the amount of ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Right.
Some network cable repair and replacement for twelve-hundred dollars, the fire department equipment purchase grant match or acquisition install of the washer dryer, so we have an outgoing grant waiting for results on, we have a eight-thousand-dollar match on that, that was set aside, assessing services for forty-three thousand dollars, and the milfoil permit prep for seven-fifty, and that would total sixty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars.
Okay, and I got the last one.
Those are all items that are in the budget that just have not been expended yet because they're either in.
No, I got you, I was just trying to separate them, and I apologize for coming late, just meetings aren't normally, I know you posted it, they're not normally at five and so.
This is not a normal meeting, which is the only reason why I wasn't even going to have public input, but because you both are here, I'll.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate the.
As far as net new encumbrances, taking projects that were for, you know, expenses from two thousand and fourteen, pull it into, using two thousand and thirteen dollars, it's just the one, that's the code red, red alert, the reverse nine-one-one system we have, we've been funding it half in the budget, half out of it.
Right.
So that's twenty-three thirty, twenty-three thirty-six.
And so, the, when you look at your agenda, it calls it end-of-year encumbrances, how much of that total amount tonight that was encumbered is, was expected from the, like, from the beginning of net last year, or is it just you have the funds available and you want to expend them?
The, the expected ones are sixty-five, well, you can almost argue that, you could argue sixty-seven thousand dollars is expected, because we have a program as far as code red to take that small amount of end year and always carry, so we're not, we're always putting the cost in half every year.
Right.
Sixty-five thousand six forty-four is in the budget, and the list I listed are all identified in the budget for this year that just have not, had, the bills have not come in yet, or the work is not going.
And that's the distinction I'm trying to make, it's not that these are something that you've.
These are net new programs.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is they're, they're, they were in the budget, and you just need to carry them over for the year because you're, you have to pay for them anyway.
I'm happy for this to encumber it.
Right, all right, I understand, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Chris Pescucci, twelve Colonial, thanks for opening it up. Even though there's no community input, you invite people here, I think it's a good idea to let people know that if they do show up, they have an opportunity to speak. Last week, I, I came here after watching the meeting at home, had some serious concerns, I spoke to them, I wrote you guys an email following, I had a week to think about it, I made a point to watch the meeting again on replay a couple times, maybe a chance to calm down a little bit, I want to take a different approach, I want to give you guys the benefit of the doubt. I'd like to think that maybe you guys made some snap decisions last week, maybe not putting much thought into, into the issues before you vote, voted, and I want to explain, maybe I'm wrong. Motion five to oh to have a special meeting to authorize, a special meeting should the police contract fail. You know, this board won't even allow one vote, one ballot vote on non-union raises and some other issues, but yet you're authorizing, pre-authorizing a do-over second chance vote in case something fails. It just doesn't seem right, you know, you get one shot at it, you wouldn't pre-authorize a vote on something that, something else that maybe did pass, and maybe give the voters an opportunity to kill it the next time around. You know, the voters know what they want, you make a case in a rational manner for what it is that's on the ballot and then trust them, they're smarter than you might give them credit for. Road agent position, I don't know how long it's been an elected position in this town, I'm guessing forever, I mean, Litchfield's has roads for a long time, we, we keep hearing or referring to that one year, maybe two years, where the voters might have made a mistake with their choice. I don't think that's a good enough reason to change the system that we have now. Even though, I think Mr. Byron correctly pointed out, it won't change your ability to fire a poor road agent, you still want the power and control to hire, or putting it differently, you want to take away the control and the choice from the voters on a permanent level. I trust the one thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand people in this town more to make these decisions than I do any five people sitting in these seats, and I think we should leave it that way. Because you could say the same thing, I know you said, and I agree, we do have an exceptional road agent now, and I got a feeling he'd be voting in as long as he wanted to run. Mr. Lamir said we need qualified and competent people, therefore the selectmen have to appoint instead of elect. And Mr. Brunel, you said when you elect people, you get good and bad, so you have to appoint to get the right person. Well, we elect the selectmen, we elect school board members, and we elect budget committee members, so if we make a mistake, we're making mistakes all around. If we're getting it right, we're getting it right all around, it's our town, it's our vote, let us make the choice. Tax cap, I know Mr. Lamir's not here, but he says there would be no safety net, Mr. Lamir's wrong, there would be a safety net, you could always go back to the voters and ask for more money should there be an emergency. Anyway, I'm not even for a tax cap, seriously, because I just think it's a cosmetic thing, if, if a board or governing body is intent on spending, they'll find a way around a tax cap. I just had to disagree with Mr. Lamir's characterization. I got two more, reduction of services warrant, I was shocked that it, nobody even seconded Mr. Byron's motion, that's just sad, I mean, I know technically you're on record as not wanting it by not seconding it, but, man, if somebody, an elected member thinks it's important enough to have a discussion and a second, you guys should second it, discuss it, and then be on record saying no. Like I said, it's just advisory, if you guys didn't like your results anyway, you could have ignored them. Net is the biggest one, that's why I saved it for the last, this is where I think you guys made a huge mistake, and that's why I'm giving you the benefit of doubt, we heard our town administrator say exact words, asking and failing every year for a COLA is not a good position for our employees to be in. Man, I agree with him one hundred percent, it's not a good position to be in, but that's life, and that's reality, and sometimes life and reality sucks. It's the same position many of the townsfolk are in, sucks for us also, ain't fair. Five of you, in one vote unanimously decided to make what you consider a horrendous wrong right, you know, last year's vote was six-hundred-and-ninety against versus four-hundred-and-seventy-four for, a two percent raise in pay, that's two-hundred-and-sixteen vote difference, but yet, that must not mean anything to you. It means, or does it mean that you don't trust the voters, you don't believe that they know what they're doing, do you not believe that they're capable of making their decisions, these decisions? Do you think they don't know what's best for them? So yet, since you didn't like that, you decided to not ask again and totally strip them permanently of that right to vote and say what they have to say. It, it's like reaching into their pockets, taking their money and redistributing it the way that you guys feel it's better spent or more important spent, taking their money. I think that is so wrong, that is the part that got me up out of my seat last week to come here. I'm hoping you had a chance to think about that, I'd love to see you guys reopen up that warrant again, and, and X it out and put it on a, on a warrant where it's supposed to be instead of just putting it in there, it is just unbelievably wrong. Instead of taking what you want, instead ask the voter, sell the idea, it's frustrating, it's hard work, it's not easy, it's always easier to take something than it is to ask for it, but you're disrespecting the voters, please stop doing that, do the right thing. Last year, the election, the voters turned down, that raise that we just spoke about was only a total of nineteen thousand dollars. Last week, it was said, Mr. Brunel, thirty thousand, he called it a swag, taxpayers' money, with the goal of increasing it to a hundred thousand dollars next year, again, nineteen thousand failed last year. Now my comments make no judgment on how much deserved a raise may or may not be to the employees, my comments have solely to do with the democracy, process, and ethics, please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Hearing none, I'm closing the floor for public comment. Next on the agenda is wage plan. So we've had, so first, let's start by, the wage plan has been, this process has been going on for almost three years. Major, the major hurdle was, is that we're changing from sort of this step program, everybody gets, no matter where you are, how you perform, into somewhat of a, of a merit-based program. And just to clarify for the public, too, the, the approval of this wa, the approval of this wage plan does not guarantee every employee in this town a raise. It does no such thing. It allows, this is a mechanism to reward on merit to deal with muscle market issues, which we do have some, we have market issues in the low, and we have market issues in the high. So this is our way of, you know, this has not been a slam dunk, let's get it done, this was a almost three-year effort. This started back when Steve Perry was chair, and several boards, so I thank everybody involved, because it's been a tough project. All right, Jason, go ahead, lead us through it.
All right, what, what had been discussed was, you know, we looked at a chart, we had talked about a methodology, we had kind of talked through the concepts of how are you going to do this, but this is replacing your aged step plan that exists now, sort of as an adjunct to the old personnel policy. So, the request was, this really needs to be part of our personnel, the appendix of our personnel policy, this needs to be more than kind of just a chart, to explain.
Correct.
This is, this is the board's policy, this is how the board will deal with wages going forward. So, what I've provided you is through the general purpose statement, a discussion of the structure, talking again about all current positions that are a series of grades, with each grade differentiated by job responsibility, again, something we've, we've, we've known and have struggled with recently because the old plan didn't adequately kind of capture where people were in the organization today. Each of those grades has an eight percent separation, the open, there's some open grades giving the board discretion to place new positions or revise positions, each grade has a start, mid, and endpoint, not steps, the separation between the start and the end is about twenty-five percent, and those boundaries are to provide guidance for the movement of the employee's wage through the grade. And they, the next piece it does is it talks about how's this going to be used, all employees will be, new employees would be at the start point for the grade of their position unless then the board's discretion initial placement should be higher than the start, often those are tied to prior experience. As, this also introduces performance, rather than just simply getting a raise for making it through another year as the current plan does. So that what, what we did here was, we pull everything in for those evaluate, that evaluation period will be in June, rather than kind of having a bunch of rolling ones through the year, all of those will come forward with a recommendation for any wage band, anything that exceeds the target that the board sets would then, if the recommendation is to exceed that band, that would be a conversation that requires separate approval of the selectmen. And then, any merit changes that would occur would be effective in the first pay period after July one. You know, we also recognize that employees who exceed the maximum of the grade will be fixed at that point until the grade may change in the future, and we also have employees whose salaries may drop below the minimum of the grade, will be brought up to that grade minimum at the next grade change. Creates an opportunity for the board to have an incentive grade if something has been sort of interesting and unique or a one-time circumstance for the year, you can kind of have, take the space between a grade, remember there's eight percent between them, so you can kind of have a temporary move maybe halfway, and then move back following sort of that unusual circumstance if it happened. Also added longevity payments, recognizing that the nature of our current workforce is such that we have people who have given quite a few years of service to us, so, you know, however you design the grades, you're going to have a lot of people who are going to be at the cap of the grade based on the number of years of service they have. So this takes the numbers basically, this, sort of the same ten, fifteen, twenty-year approach the state has, these would be done as a lump sum payment in first pay period after mid-July, so again, this doesn't compound year to year, this is, you know, one time each of those years that you qualify in that band. I outlined the process for updating, relies on the NHMA's wage plan, wage data that comes out every two years, as near as possible, you would aggregate data from comparable positions in similar towns, this gets tricky across all positions and towns because different people call different things, call some, some positions different things. I pointed out benchmark positions that are pretty consistent across towns that can be your best targets to, and then you will look at that data and figure out, do you need to adjust any of those bands? A market correction is different than performance, and the market correction, after looking at that data, the selectmen may choose to adjust the start and endpoints of the band based on the market data, and again, this would be sort of that every two-year interval, and if those imply any changes in wages, those wage changes would be effective April first, so again, kind of separate from the performance piece, because there's a market piece and a performance piece. What I then outlined, based on your conversation last week, sort of recognizing that this is going to be, to deal with the structural piece of this before you even get to a full merit-based approach, is a number of our positions lag market in similar towns for similar positions, some of ours don't, some of us, some of our positions are exactly where they should be, and some sort of are, are sort of at the high end of that frontier. You said the target last week, and you had put thirty thousand dollars to transition from the old plan into the new plan, so what I outlined here is anticipating that three-year program of how you would get from one place to the next. So in two thousand and fourteen, the longevity provision would apply, by beginning of February, I'd provide the schedule of employees and the target wage to the board for your review, and again, where current wage exceeds the target, we'd be frozen. Also provide the wage transition program to you, showing how that allocation of funds provided within the operating budget would be allocated across moving, doing the catch-up in that plan and doing the first part of that. And then, you know, those wage adjustments for dealing with the structural issues would, may be assigned to effective dates of April, July, or October one, depending on timing and dollars and space that we may be looking for to make up, to deal with that structural challenge. Step program will be in place through April first, after that, the step program would be replaced by this.
Right.
We will do the performance reviews to make sure that we have that program and start working with it, although there would be no merit adjustments made next year.
Correct.
Yeah, because we would, we would be working on all structural. In the fall, looking forward to our fifteen budget, you would define two items, one would be the cost items associated with continuing to deal with the structural adjustments, and then the second would be the estimated impact of the merit cap. And then, basically, you continue through in kind of trailing off in fifteen and sixteen with dealing with the rest of the structural pieces, and by. dealing with the rest of the structural pieces, and by '16, the last of the structural changes, it's anticipated, would be done by April 1, and then you would be in the full, full use of the program for your existing employees and the full merit provision at that point.
So phase in over three years?
I would also note that this, that this is intended as a amendment to the personnel policy, because we make reference to having a wage plan, but then we actually don't have the wage plan in the personnel policy. And I raise that too, because, you know, we tend to review those policies April timeframe. And I think, you know, as we work through kind of the logistics of this, this is sort of, I think this makes sense off the top of, you know, of looking at what we've discussed and how it would roll out. Yeah, once we all dig into the actual operations of it, we may find, hey, we want to, we need to clarify this language, or it makes sense to those of us sitting here, what's going to happen five years from now? Can somebody else figure out what we're figuring out?
Yep. Questions? I know that we've, we've all reviewed it, I know that we've incorporated some comments and clarifications and all that in the final document.
Yeah, there's a point, there's a, there's a step in this that I think is missing. And that is, unless I don't see it here, but that is on application, that somewhere in there, the Board of Selectmen should be sitting, should be setting a maximum increase through merit for the upcoming review cycle.
It is under, it is under application. Oh, God, it was...
Yeah, I thought I saw it, because I know we talked about it.
I know we talked about it.
Yeah, it says, "All wage increases will be provided to the Board of選选 under notification, no, same for the circumstances."
Form will be...
Says at the top of page.
Oh, here we go. It's, it's at the bottom of page, if you look at the bottom of page two of page one, top of page two. In the section that talks about personnel, performance review. Attached to that review will be a recommendation for an adjustment to the employee's wage within the band. Such adjustments will be within a band capped by a maximum percentage set annually by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, further discussion? Comments, concerns? Do we, my read-through was, we, you know, again, this has been a long time, so there's, it's finally taken all the pieces we talked about and put it into one document, including the rationale behind it. I think the three-year mapping, it makes sense. Clearly, some employees will not be impacted by it, there'll be no change to their salary, no change to anything, and others will get, may get an increase on longevity. I think, you know, going beyond, we talk about, going out of the step program to me made sense. The step program was a, you know, not to say, but it's a sort of guarantee movement through salary, good or bad, right? I think the merit kind of lines up with how the private sector does it. It gives us some mechanisms to, you know, encourage better performance. And of course, saying that's tough when you look at your employees and they're all, you know, really fairly, fairly good performers in general anyway, they give a lot to the town, so.
I think that there's also needs to be in here a annual review. You and I discussed that this afternoon.
Of the...
Policy.
Don't we already, doesn't the personnel party already have an annual review cycle on it? Would I just fall into that?
My thought was that it was tied to the, because I don't, I'm not envisioning this as a freestanding, I'm envisioning this is, this is appendix A of the personnel policy.
I mean, I agree with Frank. I thought the personnel policy had a, I thought it was a two-year review cycle, I thought it was.
That's for setting the bands or the grades, if you want to call it that. What I'm talking about is, because this is such a new policy, I'm sure there's going to be things that crop up.
Right, things may not work.
And then probably, it wouldn't make, it would make sense for a board to review this on some annual basis. There was a discussion I had with Jason today. Just so that when things pop up that need to be fixed, we can fix them.
And I just fall back there, I think, I thought the personnel policy itself had a review.
That's what I'm looking to see. I know most of our policies have a one- or two-year annual.
I mean, if not, I mean, a paragraph at the end of it saying, "This will be reviewed every, you know, on the anniversary of the, you know, of the year, whatever it is," would make sense. Because I agree with you. Because it is new, we're going to, obviously going to find things that didn't work right or things we may want to adjust or need to adjust. Hey, are we not live now?
No, it went down.
Did it? Okay. All right, no worries.
You know, I'm not seeing anything formal in the personnel policy, so let's, so I'll add a statement.
My understanding is the personnel policy didn't have a review system in it.
Yeah.
The only policies at due were the fiscal policies that required us to...
That's fair. So I think, I think we just add a paragraph that says, does it make sense a yearly review cycle, or?
Well, I mean, I was just saying a year, simply based upon the idea that if you get into this and find there's a problem, you want to correct it. And then that can, whether it's a year, or whether it's two years, or whether it goes into the policy manual, without review going forward in the future, it can be dependent, can be decided by other boards.
Yeah. Yeah, let's add the, just add a paragraph at the end saying, "This will be reviewed by the governing body, the Board of Selectmen yearly." And then obviously, if future boards want to change that review cycle, they can. You know, if it's a year of their effective date or a year prior to setting the, setting, because April 1st is the, is the one metric to set, to set the amount, right?
Yeah. And that happens every other year.
Okay.
You may want, you may just, well, it doesn't much matter, you do it every year, that's fine, but I was just going to say, make it, you just, the easiest way to clarify that would be to just say every even number year.
Mm-hmm.
Because that way, you're going to be using NHMA data from, what, 13?
Uh, 14.
Well, you won't have 14 data when you're in 14.
No, no, I won't have 14.
So you're going to have to use 13 and 12.
Yeah, but, yeah, their data reports are going to be, should be 12 and 14, because they skipped 13.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
I think because of this new policy, you know, reviewing it a year makes sense, obviously, and then maybe when we review, we can figure out what the right cycle is around, market, market reanalysis.
Right.
Once we get a little bit more of that under our belt.
Yeah. Well, and I would say, why don't we just say at this point, this policy will be reviewed annually during the transition period? Because that, those first three years are when you're going to be ramping up, funds availability may change, I based it on three years, you may find that by year two, you're not going to get there, you're going to stretch it out further, you're going to change it. And then when you finally are done, you're dropping that section anyway. So I think annually for the first couple of years and then you can go from there.
Okay. Are you going to add that to the doc right now?
Yeah, I just, I stuck it at the very end for the moment.
I saw it there.
So I may move it up before the chart because it will be lost probably down at the very end.
Further discussions? Hearing none. I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen adopt the Personnel Policy, Appendix A, the Town Wage Plan, as reviewed and documented today. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Why is this an appendix A, by the way?
Why is it an appendix A?
Because it doesn't fit nicely in the original.
Because we, we didn't leave a spot mid-personnel policy for it, and so this was...
Our policy's given numbers, I guess.
It's part of them. Well, yeah, I suppose you could, I mean, you could...
Why couldn't you give it a number, or give it a number than, or, this should replace the existing policy.
The existing policy just makes reference to a wage, there's nothing detailed. We've kind of had this pre-existing step plan that's been, no.
Whatever you want to call it, that's fine.
I have no problem when, when we revise and update the personnel policy, slotting this in in the right place.
And then I'm basically getting it out as the appendix.
I just didn't want to open the whole thing, drop this in and, and go.
Yeah, because I remember the, we had inserted some form, formulas in the original policy, but remember, that was two years ago?
Right.
And it got pulled out because we couldn't come to an agreement around merit versus non-merit step versus market versus wherever we were. And so I went back to just reference the step plan. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 3-0-0. Okay. That includes that. I did have one item for other business before we conclude, conclude the meeting. At the last meeting, the December 23rd meeting, we got into a discussion, well, it goes back. So in December 9th, we had a motion that was made, and I'm reading the minutes, but Selectman Byron made a motion to reduce 4197 dot 10, line item 560, by 6715, basically removing the NHMA membership that was in the proposed budget. It was seconded by Mr. Bork. We had a lengthy discussion, and during that discussion, it became obvious that some members were confused by what a yea vote was going to represent versus a nay vote was going to represent. The motion, the motion reduced past 3-1-0. Continuing discussion happened around, did we understand the impact? It was obvious at that time that there was some confusion. A motion was made by Selectman Brunel to re-add, well, yeah, the motion was made to re-add the funds back in, which failed 2-2, so it was split.
That was after I made a motion to reconsider.
Correct. Three, yeah, right, it was reconsidered, and I made a motion to put it back in, and the motion failed 2-2. If the vote had gone, if, if the clarity in the beginning of the motion, when the first motion was established, the, the motion to actually withdraw the money would have failed also, but irrelevant to that. Technically, we stand that, that motion passed, the funds were removed. On the meeting on the 23rd, that's the day we brought it back up to reconsider, or, we tabled, we had, the discussion carried on, and because we didn't have a full member, it was asked by the town administrator to table the discussion until we had a full board, so all parties could be heard. When I constructed the motion, I inappropriately constructed the motion because my assumption was, the pass motion didn't happen, it just was null and voided because we tabled it. In fact, it is not true. The motion, at this point, still stands, 3-1-0, which removed the funding out of the, for NHMA. I think we reported the, the vote that, of that night, of that reconstructed motion, which again, was technically incorrect, was 2-2-1, which basically, you know, it was, my assumption was it was reestablished or was still there. But the reality of it is, is the NHMA funding, based on the minutes, based on the recording, and we re-listened, it was, was failed. So at this point, we stand without the NHMA membership within the budget. And I'm only bringing it up just to clarify, because Mr. Byron obviously pointed to it, and I went back and did review it. I also reviewed the note, the minutes, the written minutes also, and discovered a small technical error there too, but, so at this point, I just want to make sure that the pub, one, the public understands that that item was reduced, it is going to remain reduced because that's where, you know, if we go back, that's technically where we're at. I'm taking no accident doing other than clarify the vote. If there are folks that believe it needs to be reconsidered, it can be reconsidered at a later vote, at a next meeting if, if you choose to do so, but it only can be brought up by the folks that voted, the heavy prevailing vote.
Well, in the email I presented to you, John, I did say that in the past, historically, the common practice of the board has been to reconsider, any person can reconsider and bring up to change the budget, so. I'm not necessarily of the opinion that only those who are on the winning, I'll call it the winning or the...
Right, the prevailing side.
Prevailing side can do that.
So unless there's a motion to do anything else at this point, that's where it stands. Now, I did ask, just, and I think at the next meeting, we can talk about it again, but I did ask Jason to pull aside all the things that we would do. I did have it, I haven't had a chance to, no one has it, so there's no sense really discussing it tonight. But all the items that we benefit from and the things we will not be able to buy into as, if we're not a member. And I think it's also very, it's important to also note that during that discussion, and this discussion happened twice, not, this was just the latest one. Most municipalities within the state of New Hampshire are members, there's only, I believe, only three members that are, three towns that are not, they're actually, they're large cities, and I think we commented on one actually rejoining, right? So, you know, my take on it was that we understand that they're going through a change, we've, you know, there was some value that we already, with services we already get from them. When we, when we eliminate this, this membership, that does mean that all of our boards no longer have access to legal counsel or any services that are offered by LGC, and I think that needs to be clarified to the, to those boards also, because I know they use them. And our membership gets withdrawn as of January 1st, I believe, right? Is it January?
January, it was January.
Yeah, so January 1st, our membership is gone, so effective January 1st, because it's not in the budget, it's not in the, in our, even our recommended appropriation, we shouldn't be renewing it anyway, because the intent of the board is to remove. So, okay? So that's just my clarification on that one item there. And like I said, I will forward to the board some of the other things, if you want to reconsider it at a future meeting, we can reconsider it. But, okay. Anything else the board want to bring up before we close, or before I accept the motion to close? Hearing none? Do I have a motion? No one wants to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second my book. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 3-0-0. For the public, have a happy and safe New Year's Eve, which will be in two days, and our next meeting will be, I'm going to have a calendar in front of me. You know what it is?
Most people will be celebrating New Year's Eve tomorrow night.
Well, tomorrow night, you're right. What is it?
13.
Yeah, December 13th. So our next meeting will be December 13th at 6 o'clock.
Or January 13th.
January, did I say December? January 13th at 6 o'clock, wow. But have a good night and thank you for, for watching.